Good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you all to the Tuesday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. You know what? Where? Oh, here we go. At this time, I'd like to welcome our very own Joan Maza. She's going to lead us in our invocations, and then our pledges will be led by our friends from the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. Lynn Ship will, Kristi Canard, John Bowers, and Gerald Marchant will lead us in our pledges. If you'll please turn off your cell phones, and if you'll please stand. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this day. We exalt you over this court and Denton County. As we go into Pentecost, we ask you to blow a fresh wind of your Spirit over us, giving us fresh revelation and guidance for this county. We ask you to bless us today as we work to make Denton County a place where your glory dwells. And now I'm going to read number six. The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace. I pray this and decree this in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Joan, and thank you. Oh, boy. These are all, these are all four A's.
Four A, yeah.
Okay. Oh. Most of these are four A's. I'll save those for just a second. Let's go, let's go to item one on our agenda, which is public input for items not listed on the agenda, and I would like to welcome up Mr. Willie Hudson. Good morning, Mr. Hudson.
Morning. Judge.
Good to see you.
Commissioners.
Morning, sir.
Uh-oh. Well, where are we on where do you need to go? Oh, on that? Oh, okay. Well, I don't trust you with it either.
And I had to, Mr. I had to ask God to forgive me because I was thinking about you getting on my little walker, and I would have dumped you. I know I would have.
I would not trust him to push you.
I would have, I would have dumped it. I'd have been laughing like crazy. So I told, and God knows I meant that. So I had to ask for his forgiveness.
Resist the temptation.
Oh, man, this wasn't.
Well, I see you have the notebook. I think it's a notebook Peggy gave you. I know you had a good meeting, sir. She told me you had a good meeting. Go right ahead. I'll restart the clock.
Okay. You know, we've all had loss, all of us, in some form or another, and people we love and appreciate and, and just, we just know about, and they, and they die. And we don't know what happens after that. But we know we have a sadness in our heart about it. And that's what I feel with the St. John Cemetery situation. And so when I viewed you as, you didn't care. It didn't matter to you. It's nothing of any importance to you. And I think what Judge you brought up the other day was there's things you, you, you believe you can't say and do, and you just, this is the wrong form, for a wrong platform, and where we, we will meet like this, I'm, it's not a good place to air things and to talk about things. And when I come in here and I see you, and you don't say anything, that just bugs the heck out of me. But he did explain why that takes place. That helped. So I'm, uh, what you did with Ms., uh, Peggy.
Peggy Riddle?
Riddle, yes, the historian.
Yes, sir.
That was a big, that was a big deal for me.
Good, great.
Because she came up with this book, and it chronicles, it shows in writing what has happened, and more importantly, what you have done over the years to try to help with the situation. That's a big deal to me. And it'll turn out to be a big deal for you because I'll behave differently when I come in here, knowing that all this you've done and what you're planning to do, it's just, it's just good. It's just good. And so now, when I think about my lost brethren and sister, sisters in that place and it, and see, here's what happens. When stuff happens to you, to me, I tend to think about the negative more than the positive, and I just harp on it inside myself. I, well, I, you know, I should have had this. I should have had that. Why don't they do this? Why don't, and all of that. But what God showed me is says, don't you forget, you're not like that. You, you didn't grow up with that. Look at all that you have and that you've accomplished and all that you do. And so I start focusing on that. I feel better.
Good.
Everybody should feel better. I'm just sorry that I have to work on Commissioner Mitchell. I, I just, that, that tumbling out of my chair was just so much fun. Forgive me, sister. I'll try to get it fixed. But anyway, I want to thank you and Ms. Riddle for what you all done, the commissioners, and the helping me in, in just dealing with this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I, I, well, I, like I, when you and I had a special time in my office, I think it was back in nineteen, when you know, that, that night. Well, two thousand nineteen, probably. It was right after I became judge. And we, it was that night we were in a committee meeting, and we sat at, we came to my office, we visited, and we prayed together, actually, if you recall that night. And I said, you know, I want us to continue to work together on some of these projects. And that, that offer that night, and that spirit of that conversation still is true today. And I'm glad that that meeting with Peggy was fruitful for you, and, and she's got me a copy of that same, that same documentation. And so we're going to continue to work together on all this. So I'm, I'm glad that, I'm glad that you, you're, she brought you up to date on, on the good work that we've been trying to do.
Okay.
All right, good. Thank you, sir.
And any hope, any hope of trying to keep the sheriff and the sheriff deputies from tripping me as I go out?
No guarantees. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. All right. All right, let's go to, we're going to skip through our agenda here just a little bit. Let's go to item three B. And Van, if you'll come forward, this is approval of a resolution recognizing William Van Close's retirement in any appropriate action. And I'll get out my court order here. Well, good morning, Van.
Good morning.
We're glad to see you this morning. So this is a, a court resolution honoring William Van Close for four years of service to Denton County. And the Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the twenty-third day of May twenty twenty-three, considered the following resolution. Whereas after four years of dedicated service to Denton County, William Van Close, construction coordinator, will retire on June the second, twenty twenty-three. Whereas Van started his tenure with Denton County on August the fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, in the Public Facilities Department, working as construction coordinator. Van has assisted the Construction Management Department by being a dedicated and reliable source for subcontractor accessibility and construction oversight on multiple Denton County projects. And whereas Van has had a long career working for some renowned companies such as Dr. Pepper, Texaco, and the Fire and Emergency Training Network. Van's only regret in his career was not pursuing employment with Denton County sooner. And Van was privileged to work with a great group of people in the public facilities and bid them farewell. We have many of them with us this morning. Whereas Van is happy and proud to begin his next chapter in life with his wife Cheryl of almost fifty years, and Van and Cheryl plan to travel in their RV with their two fur babies. And when Van isn't completing projects on his honey-do list, he also plans to spend some relaxing time fishing and playing golf. And whereas the Denton County Public Facilities Department wishes Van a farewell and thanks him for his years of service to our department and the citizens of Denton County. And now therefore be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to William Van Close our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Van on his well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court this twenty-third day of May, twenty twenty-three, upon a motion by the chair.
Bless you.
Bless. I was trying to get through without sneezing. Uh, motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? Well, Van, I just want to be the first to say congratulations on your retirement. You've worked a long time, and I know you and Cheryl are excited about your next chapter and going to see America in, in your RV and looking at lots of different sights. And I know you love history and all the different nature areas of America, and you're going to have a really good time. So I want to thank you for helping to, uh, with the different construction projects we've had going on here since you, these last four years. We've built a lot of things. Takes lots of people involved in, in our different projects to inspect the projects and work with the contractors and make sure that the taxpayer's getting their, their money's worth. And we have our, Dell Nelson is with us today, and Dell would, your supervisor, and Dell would like to extend some comments as well. And we promise you get the last word.
First of all, I'd say thank you to Van for his tenure with the Construction Department. And a little surprise this morning, Van's, we're actually working to next week to June second, which we will have a party for him on June second over at the Facilities Department at one o'clock. But I got, I got this email this morning saying Van's closed out all of his stuff. I'm like, wait a minute, man. We're still going to squeeze you like a lemon for next few days. Come on. But very much appreciate Van and his tenure with the county and his dedication. And I wish I could go with him on his travel, his wife on their travels. I mean, that's a dream for all of us to do. But, man, we're proud of you, and we hope, wish you much success and much happiness on retirement. And Van did tell me at one point in time that, uh, kind of gave him a wide berth sometimes. When he was a younger man, he was a boxer.
Oh, gosh. All right.
So we was having that conversation. Yeah, we was having that conversation one day, and I was like, man, if I talk to Van, I got to be careful what I say. He might want to cut loose on me. We, we all, you see the guys, we're all here supporting you. And Dwayne couldn't be here today, unfortunately. He's, he's out, had a little surgery and recovering, but he sends his best wishes for you as well, you and your wife. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dell. Thank you, Dell. Van, it's all yours.
I just want to thank you, everyone. Excuse me, for this opportunity and the privilege of working here. It's been, been really good, really good. All the people I work with have been supportive, have been, they've helped me learn some new things.
Yeah.
And it's, it's been really great, and I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good, good. Well, thank you for your service. Thank you for your service of the county. All right, we have a motion, a second. Hear no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Your name is, thank you, Van.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go to item three C, and if our guests for our boating week would come forward. If y'all can come right down here, we'll go ahead and do y'all. All right, well, good morning. Morning, folks. I will go ahead and read this proclamation. This is item three C's approval of our proclamation recognizing May the twentieth through the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three as National Safe Boating Week in any appropriate action. Do you want to make some introductions of who do we have with us today? Go right ahead.
And operations officer.
Perfect. Thank you.
My name is Kristi Canard and from the St. Flotilla, and I'm the secretary.
Perfect. Good. Well, thank y'all. So this is our court proclamation recogni- recognizing National Safe Boating Week. And whereas for over one hundred million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreation activity from coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are taking to the water and enjoying time together, boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. And whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so, so they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. And whereas on average, six hundred and fifty people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, and seventy-five percent of those are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas most of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their life by drowning each year would be alive today if they had worn their life jackets. And now therefore be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim the week of May the twentieth through the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, as National Safe Boating Week. And we call upon all citizens to practice safe boating habits and to always wear a life jacket when boating. Done in open court this the twenty-third day of May, twenty twenty-three, upon a motion made by?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? Would y'all like to, to expound on this at all?
I would, I would just like to say, you know, it, on our lakes, we, we have one of the most dangerous lakes in, in the United States, and we have a lot of people out there and just trying to get boater education and the, informing the public of things they can do to be safe on the water. Eighty-three percent of the time, when somebody's wearing a life jacket, we can save them. Eighty-three percent of the time. So, um, just that little simple thing, having a life jacket on and, and getting that, and that message out. It might not be the most comfortable thing, but they make all kinds of life jackets. And that education, getting that to the public and, and teaching that is the most important thing to us. And trying to save lives in our recreational times. So, you know, trying to keep those people alive. We want them to go home the same way they come to the lake.
Exactly. But sunburned. Well, I, I'm glad that y'all are here today, and hopefully this will bring awareness, and we'll be able to, um, promote this week with these pictures and so forth, and encourage people to do exactly what you're asking, to wear a life jacket on our lakes.
Thank you, guys, for the proclamation, and it does help.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right. Any other comments? Thank y'all for, thank y'all for being here. Thank you for what you do throughout the year. All right, hear no other comments? I'll, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Your name is, thank y'all for being here. All right. Are we all in? Okay, let's get, let's get over to the, let's get Bobby in. It'd be nice. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the work you do.
Let's, I don't believe our guest Nancy is with us today for three A. I do not believe she's here, correct? All right, let's go ahead and do our public hearing. Let's go to four A, which is a public hearing to consider the installation of parking restriction signs, no parking signs, and no overnight commercial parking restriction signs within Denton County Freshwater Supply District Number Ten, now known as Elm Ridge Water Control and Improvement District, Elm Ridge WCID, and Denton County Commissioner Precinct One. And we have a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Your name is, we are in our public hearing, and we do have several guests with us today. And I want to thank y'all for being here. I would like to remind you all that our, our public input is limited to three minutes, and so I'll be happy to set the, uh, the timer here, so y'all don't have to do that. So I will, I will go ahead and set that timer here. So let's go ahead and welcome up, we have Felicia Pacewit, Witz from Aubrey. Sorry if I butchered that. Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
Let's push that button there and make sure that, is it green on the bottom of the microphone? Push and hold. Okay, is it on? Okay, good. Okay, good. All right, go right ahead, Felicia, thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for having me.
You bet.
So I am a resident of Arabbrook Community, will be hearing from a few of us. More importantly, I am a mom to two toddlers, a two and a four-year-old. So as you can imagine, I am extremely busy and have very little privacy. My youngest can even unlock the bathroom door from the outside, so I became a runner. It is my space, it is my time for myself. I cannot be disturbed when I run. It is my therapy. Now, you can take one look at me and know that I am not safe running. That is just my reality. It is something I think about every time I walk out my door. Unfortunately, there's nothing you or anyone else can do about that short of, you know, driving behind me while I run. But you can put these signs up and make it a little bit easier for me to cross these residential streets. It is one less thing that I would have to worry about in my community. I'm not talking thirteen eighty-five, which we all know is quite congested, to say the least. This is community streets. Now, I'm not negating the fact that truck driving is not one of the professions that is the backbone of our country. I'm not. I have several family members who are truck drivers. I'm actually from a family of dairy farmers, so I know all about hard work, long hours, and no holidays. I would not say that my safety is even more important than these people making a living. What I would say is these trucks are on HOA residential streets and in any other community, this would not be allowed. These vehicles can be parked just three miles away for sixty dollars a month on Parven Road. Or if they care about hail coverage, they can park over on Providence Village for two hundred dollars a month. In fact, a quick Google search will show seven authorized places for these trucks to park within six miles from where they are parking now. Another quick Google search will show the US DOT numbers that some of these truck drivers do not even live in our community but in neighboring areas. I'm asking for these signs because our HOA does not even allow boats, RVs, or trailers in residents' own driveways, but it requires them to pay for storage. And that is just what these truck drivers should be required to do as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for being here. All right, next, let's go to Monica Barlow. And after Monica, we'll have Julie Hamlin. Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
Glad to have you here.
Can I make this slower because I'm short?
You bet.
All right, thank you so much for having me. My name is Monica Barlow and I'm also a resident of Arabbrook, one of three neighborhoods in Elm Ridge. I come before you today to urge you to vote in favor for the installation for the parking restriction signs in our residential neighborhoods and to also allow the enforcement of the signage by Elm Ridge PD. My neighborhood has had problems with tractor units and semi-trailers parking in our streets since last year. They were parking for residents' homes right next to a children's playground and along the bend of the road, which makes it impossible to see oncoming traffic when trying to navigate around the trailer. Because we're in a water district, lighting has always been an issue and tractors tend to park in areas with low lighting. This is a huge safety issue as the tractors block drivers' views of any pedestrians trying to cross the road, especially children. In a recent HOA survey conducted late last year, sixty-six point ninety-five percent of residents who responded have children under the age of twelve. In addition to the parking issues, we've also had incidents with the drivers themselves, including an attempted hit-and-run with an eighteen-wheeler on April twenty-third, so fairly recent, as well as truck drivers littering our streets with trash, including containers of urine right next to the children's playground. So as a result, our residents are extremely passionate about this matter and I would like to submit a petition that we have put together since May sixth. In just a little over two weeks, we have collected four hundred fifty-sevens unique household signatures in compliance with the Texas Transportation Code Section five-four-five-point-three-oh-seven. And in just a little over two weeks, I mean, that comprises of like thirty-one point eighty-seven percent of our current occupied households in the community. We sincerely hope you understand our concerns and why we desperately need these signs. I'm not sure who I should be speaking to.
I'll take it, I'll be happy to take it for you.
So you have a copy? That way you can have a copy still.
Yeah, you have a copy.
Oh, okay.
Perfect, I figured you did.
Perfect, the original's fine, thank you, ma'am.
All right, and that's basically it, but thank you so much for your time and consideration. And yeah, you'll be hearing from Julie, another Arabbrook resident.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good, well, thank you, Monica. All right, our next is Monica. Monica, thank you and thank you for the petition. All right, next is Julie Hamlin. Good morning, Julie. And then we'll be followed by Kim, Kim does not want to speak, we get the next person on deck here. Bill, Bill Knack will go next. Okay, go right ahead.
Hello, how are y'all? So just like my other two neighbors, I am an Arabbrook resident. I've lived there for just over two years. First, I just want to say, a lot of the homeowners in the neighborhood, including myself, this is the first home that I've ever owned. And, you know, we specifically bought in this neighborhood because, number one, it was an HOA and it was advertised to us to have miles and miles of beautiful trails and ponds in which it does. It's beautiful, we love it because of that. And just about a year ago, we had our first instance where a semi-truck driver was parking in the neighborhood. And we kind of live in a weird area, you know, we are in Denton County, but we're not in the city limits, but we are part of the city and it's an interesting setup we have. So the HOA was not able to do anything, but it wasn't that big of a deal because it was just one truck. It was kind of at the end of the neighborhood, so people were annoyed, but it wasn't that big of a deal. And now, a year later, we've gotten up to seven or eight at one time parked. And it's not just the cabs, they park the trailers with loads on the trailers. Like Monica said, they're mainly parking down by the largest park in the neighborhood. They litter trash and I think the tipping point for a lot of the neighbors was the jugs of urine they were leaving outside the trucks on the sidewalk, right in front of a children's park. So, you know, that alone was enough to just put most of us over the edge and that's what kind of got this whole ball rolling. And we've been fighting with the HOA, they don't have jurisdiction to do it. You know, Elm Ridge can't really do much about it because we don't have signs posted. So the other thing that's the craziest part is, I think only one of the trucks actually lives in the community. The rest of them do not even live in Arabbrook. We know one of them, we've tracked back to Windridge, which is the neighborhood just north of us. So it'd be one thing if it was residents and we could contact them, but we can't. And there's really nothing we can do about it. So yeah, it's an issue, it's unsightly, it's ugly, and honestly, it's just rude. The drivers are not nice. We've tried to respectfully talk to them and they are very rude, they do not care. We even contacted the trucking companies themselves, which aren't even in the state of Texas. None of them operate in the state of Texas. The trucking companies also do not care. So at this point, our last resort is to just get the signage and to make it a simple and easy fix for us, so.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Sorry, y'all have gone through all that. All right, next is Bill. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Bill Knack?
Yes, sir, Bill Knack. I am the Chief of Police for Elm Ridge Water Control Improvement District.
Good morning, thank you for your service.
Good morning.
Morning, service.
We are the primary law enforcement agency for the Arabbrook, Artesia, and Savannah. I speak on behalf of the Board of Directors, the community, and the police department that we support this to put the signage in. As you know, we are primarily a residential neighborhood. We have no commercial, we have just a little bit of retail on three-eighty. And these developments were built for exactly what these people were saying. It's new homeowners with children and these streets were not designed for eighteen-wheelers. They do create a safety hazard for us. And, you know, we're kind of in predicament here. We cannot do an ordinance like a regular city, so we don't have that option. The HOA cannot do anything because like they said, the majority of these truck drivers don't even live in our community. They just found a loophole and they're over there. They would not do this in their own neighborhood, quite honestly. So, you know, we are just asking for you to allow us to put those signs up and amend our original traffic plan that the developer put in so we can enforce five-four-five-three-oh-seven and help make that community a little safer. So I thank you for your time.
Perfect, good, thank you, chief.
Yep, appreciate it.
All right, next is Jonathan. You're just here as a subject matter expert if we need, okay, thank you.
Perfect.
He's from a law firm. And then we do have one individual who does not wish to speak and it's Kimberly Price and she's she's voting to, she would express her desire that we prohibit the commercial vehicles parking there, so. I will do that. All right, is there anyone else in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the installation of the signs? Is there anyone? Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Hey, guys, I didn't know y'all were speaking today. I have three children who live in that neighborhood and four grandchildren.
In that, just for the record, just in case.
Melinda Preston.
Hello, Melinda.
So I have three children who live in the neighborhood and four grandchildren. So, and I have seen the eighteen-wheelers on that road. It is extremely dangerous, so I would love to see you guys pass this today. So I appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you for being here. All right, anyone else in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the installation of the signs? All right, hearing none, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
To close?
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, discussion, Commissioner Edmondson.
Thank you. I totally understand and agree with what y'all are asking for, but I have a question. Chief, maybe you can answer for me. How can you enforce this if we put these signs up? What additional power all of a sudden do you have? I'm just curious how that's going to work.
If you'll come speak to the mic, maybe our legal counsel may be able to help as well if we need to.
So we have the legal authority to enforce any traffic law that's in the Texas Traffic Code and five-four-seven-three-oh-seven is already in the traffic code. And basically, the only way you can enforce that law is to have those signs up in the neighborhoods. So that's the only piece we're missing to enforce a law that's already in place in the Texas Traffic Code.
So even though it says parking, it is considered a traffic code if?
That's correct, it's under the Texas Transportation Code.
Good, because it sounds like these are real troublesome issues and I appreciate you all coming.
It is, and it's multiplying, so. But yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you, chief. Commissioner Williams.
I just want to thank all the citizens that have called with their concerns and emailed. I want to thank Felicia for all her efforts in our transportation department with getting this all put together for us and I do a move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Before we close out this item, I would like to say, thank y'all for being here. You know, it's important that we do things legally and properly as outlined in the local government code and the appropriate statutes. And so I'm sorry I've had to go through all of this to get to this point, but there's processes which we have to follow and postings and so forth. So thank y'all, sorry this has taken up y'all's time and considerable effort. Appreciate everyone who signed a petition and shares your same sentiments as, and it sounds like the Commissioners Court shares all sentiments as well, so thank y'all for being here. So we have a motion and a second, any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all, thank y'all for your, thank y'all for your good work.
Thanks, chief.
And I would thank Commissioner Williams, thank you for all your good efforts on this as well. All right. And y'all are welcome to leave and it won't hurt our feelings, y'all spend enough time on this issue. So I totally get it. Let's go through here, see if there's. Look around, let's see if there's anyone we need to handle. All right, let's go back to item two, which is our consent agenda members. Are there any items you would like to pull or do we have a motion for approval as presented?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A is approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item two B is approval of the intra-departmental transfers. Item two C is approval of payroll. Item two D is approval of budget memo request one-zero-one-three-five-zero for the Vehicle Maintenance Department to transfer six thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars from garage supplies to fuel to cover a shortage in the line item to cover the future cost for fuel and fuel additives. Item two E is approval of budget memo request one-zero-one-three-eight-zero for juvenile detention to transfer eight thousand dollars from various line items and administrative supplies to post-adjudication detention, to transfer five thousand from training and education to administrative supplies for a total transfer of thirteen thousand dollars to cover the cost of necessary items for daily operation. Item three A is approval of resolution recognizing Nancy McLaughlin's retirement and any appropriate action. Whereas this is a resolution honoring Nancy McLaughlin for twenty-two years of service to Denton County. Whereas the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a rare session on the twenty-third day of May, two thousand and twenty-three, considered the following resolution. Whereas Nancy McLaughlin, Senior Clerk, retired on May the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, after completing twenty-two years of exceptional service to Denton County. Whereas Nancy began her career in Denton County in June two thousand and one in the county clerk's office. She dutifully served in the law library before transferring to the Civil and Probate Departments where she was promoted to the Senior Clerk of the County Clerk's Civil Intake Division. Whereas Denton County Clerk's Courts Division will greatly miss her unique culinary creations and intricate needlework. Whereas during her time of service with the Denton County Clerk's Office, Nancy has faithfully and diligently carried out her duties and obligations while maintaining a high level of excellence and has conducted herself in a professional manner as a representative of the department. Whereas Nancy plans to enjoy her retirement by spending more time with her daughter and two sons, traveling abroad and volunteering. Whereas all of appreciation and respect to Nancy's dedication to the Denton County Clerk's Office, her knowledge, dependability, and work ethic will be greatly missed. And now therefore be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Nancy McLaughlin our sincere and grateful appreciation for her dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Nancy on her well-end retirement, extend our best wishes to her for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court this the twenty-third day of May, two thousand and twenty-three, upon a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. We do have our county clerk with us today, Ms. Julie Luke. Julie, did you want to extend any comments for Nancy or you're okay? Okay, all right, she's going to miss her. All right. All right, all right, hearing, are there any comments from members of the court? Well, Nancy, thank you for your two decades of service to the county. We appreciate you, sorry you couldn't be here today in person. All right, hearing no other comments, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, next, let's go to item five A, approval of the bill report. Payments from CSUD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT, interest, and D, forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Good morning.
Good morning, judges and commissioners. On behalf of Jeff, may I recommend approval of the bill report as presented with no changes?
All right, do we have a motion to approve the bill report as presented? We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six A, approval of award of ATB- Approval of Ward of ITB Number Two Three Dash Two Seven Five Eight Exterior Lighting Maintenance to Victory Lighting and Electrical Services and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven A. Approval of Budgetman Request One Zero One Three Two Zero for the County Court's Chair Department to transfer forty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars from county visiting judges to visiting judge expenses within the department and to County Court at Law Number Two. And one thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars from County Court's shared to County Criminal Court Number One for their total transfer of fifty thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars of transfers or necessary track expenditures for recording purposes in the line with, in line with the auditor's office requirements and any appropriate action. We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven B. Approval of Budgetman Request One Zero One Three Six Zero for the County Jail to transfer one hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars from salary assistance to out-of-county prisoner expense to cover the cost of inmates housed at the Monte Cook and Parker County jails for the month of April due to the shortage of detention officers. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C. Approval of Budgetman Request One Zero One Three Seven Zero for the County Jail to transfer four hundred and sixty-six thousand and forty-four dollars from salary assistance to overtime cash option outside of the budget amendment and Human Resources overtime policy as recommended by the Budget Office for the jail to continue to operate as mandated by the Texas Commission on Jail Standards due to a shortage of detention officers.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven D. Approval of Budgetman Request One Zero One Three Nine Zero for the County Criminal Court Number Four to transfer thirty-five hundred dollars from Psychological Services to County Criminal Court Number Two and Three to cover the cost of psychological services previously held in these courts. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Seven E is approval of Budgetman Request One Zero One Four Zero Zero for Facilities Management to transfer twenty-five thousand from janitorial supplies to plumbing supplies to continue maintenance of county plumbing systems critical to building operations.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner, Miss, Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A. This is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hired in adult probation, two promotions at the district clerk, one rehired in juvenile probation, and one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect. Good. Thank you, Gustavo. That's presented for recording purposes only. Next is eight B. This is approval of the creation of a temporary slot for the County Treasurer for approximately five weeks. A chair move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item ten A. Is approval of the final plat for the Boom Branch Ranch Estates, lots of one through twelve blocks A. This is thirty point four five acres located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to thirteen A. Approval of the United Way of Denton County Incorporated Funding Request to fulfill the allocation American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-nineteen and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen B. Approval to, of request to submit an application for funding from the Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And this is a state criminal alien assistance program in amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is, next is item fourteen A. Approval of the User License Agreement for an Online Vital Records Request Application between Denton County, Texas and Permitium LLC for Online Vital Records Request, Identity Verification and Payment Processing Service and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Julie. Next is fourteen B. Approval of an Order Setting June the sixth, twenty twenty-three at nine AM as a date and time to conduct a public hearing before the Denton County Commissioners Court to consider the proposed installation of no, uh, commercial parking signs within Denton County Freshwater Supply District Numbers Eight B, eleven A, eleven B, eleven C, Paloma Creek, located in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fourteen C is approval of number one amended commercial contract approved property for the purchase of Denton County, Texas, and one point five acres at Roseme Parkway and Waynoka Drive, Carrollton, Texas. This is seven five zero zero seven, and further described as the H Grooms Abstract A zero four four zero A. This is Track Fifty. This is one point five acres in Carrollton from the M DJ Waynoka LLC for the sales price of one million one hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars plus all applicable closing costs, including title insurance policy and boundary survey. Two, approval of addendum to the commercial contract on improved property between the M DJ Waynoka LLC as seller and the county of Denton as buyer. And three, grant authorization to proceed with closing and approval of the Denton County Judge to sign the amended commercial contract and addendum to commercial contract and all necessary closing documents. And three, grant authorization for independent consideration of fifty dollars to be released to the seller from the escrow funds upon request. And four, with funding to come from the Permanent Improvement Fund and any appropriate action. And a chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? I want to thank John Felt for all your hard work on this. Thank you, sir. All right, any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is another real estate. This is fourteen D. Approval of one amended con, commercial contract on improved property for the purchase of Denton, by Denton County, Texas for seventy-four thousand five hundred and eighty square feet of land. This is one point seven one acres at the southwest corner of Roseme Parkway and Old Denton Road, Carrollton, Texas, seven five zero zero seven, and further described as Stone Creek Edition Carrollton ISD. This is Lot Three, Block A for the sales price of one million six hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars plus all applicable closing costs, including title insurance, policy and boundary survey. Two, approval of addendum to commercial contract on improved property between Golden Shamrock Realty Incorporated as seller and the county of Denton as buyer. And three, grant authorization to proceed with closing and approval of the, for the Denton County Judge to sign the commercial, the amended commercial contract, the addendum to commercial contract, and all necessary closing documents. And three, grant authorization for independent consideration of fifty dollars to be released to the seller from the escrow funds upon request. And with four, with funding to come from the Permanent Improvement Fund and any appropriate action. A chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I would like to, before we go to executive session, I would like to go to eighteen, item eighteen, future meetings. We remind everybody that we will not have Commissioners Court next Tuesday, May thirtieth. Wait, Tuesday, May thirtieth. Just want to remind everybody about that. Bring attention to that. We'll start on item seventeen, committee updates with Commissioner Williams.
Thanks, Judge. Um, I just want to, uh, quickly thank all the citizens. We had two of our outer loop meetings. We had one last week and then one last night. That'll be the two we have for the spring. We'll have some more in the fall. But we had a overwhelming, uh, turnout at both events. And the majority of the folks were very supportive of what, uh, this, the county is trying to do along with the state, obviously. And I want to thank, uh, you know, Jody and Tina's organization, Tina and her, her people, uh, Capricia, the consulting firm that has been hired. They did a phenomenal job putting this together. It was laid out, uh, in a very professional manner. And, and they handled themselves exceptionally well. And we should be very proud that, uh, how transparent that the county's being, um, trying to do this properly and, and get the input from all the citizens. And if you unfortunately weren't able to make those two, we will have more. And you're able to go online and, and see all the same things that, that they presented, uh, those two meetings. So again, I just want to thank everybody that was involved, all the citizens that came, all the wonderful feedback. And then I feel, uh, it was overwhelmingly a positive response. And, uh, we will hope to keep that same narrative going forward. So thank you, everybody. Thanks, Judge.
I think that's a great characterization of it. And then we do want to thank everyone who's involved in the, in the process. And, and, uh, I'm, I'm glad that we're being very transparent. That was one of the things that we committed to everybody as we started through this. In the bond election, if you remember, it was very chambers as we would talk through that, uh, back last year. And, and so I think that's, we're doing exactly what we committed to do and promised to do. So, and I have heard that positive feedback as well. I was out of town when April two attended. But I did hear that Jody was giving me the update this morning. Commissioner Mitchell.
Want to remind everybody, everyone that at the Sells Tax Holiday, uh, twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, Memorial Day Ceremony in Flower Mound at Windsor Road, Fiesta Chara, and Louisville on the twenty-eighth at the Bill Weaver Arena. Also, we have Celebrate Holland Village. It's going to be on the tenth of June, so mark your calendars. Saturday, June third, Hickory Creek Summer Cleanup. That's all I have this morning.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Edmondson?
Well, we all know that summer is here. And, uh, just in case you hadn't noticed, on May twenty-seventh, the Water Works here in Denton will have their opening day at the Water Works Park. Uh, on the thirtieth, we have the Junior Master Gardeners Mini Camp in Denton at the Deena Rec Center. We have a couple of other things in other parts of the county in Trophy Club. They have a summer celebration on May twenty-sixth, uh, at their Independence Park East. And then a Memorial Day Ceremony on the twenty-ninth from ten to eleven, uh, at their Medland Cemetery and Trophy Club. Let's all remember, uh, about Memorial Day. Uh, it is a, a celebration, uh, of thanks for those who have given their lives to give us the freedom to assemble as we are today. So let's not forget what it is. It's not just hot dogs and family, and it certainly is not shooting off fireworks. But it is definitely something we have to remember and give thanks for this country and for those people who gave their lives so that we might have the freedoms.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, let's go to executive session. Let's go to item, we have item fifteen A, which is Texas Government Code five five one zero seven one. One A, Consultation with Attorney in Closed Meeting When a Government Body seeks the advice of its attorney about contemplated litigation regarding an EEOC claim filed by Fred D. Barrell Jr. Item fifteen B, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven six and five five one zero eight nine. Closed meeting deliberate the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices. Item fifteen C, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven one one A. Consultation with Attorney in a Closed Meeting When a Government Body seeks the advice of its attorney about pending litigation in calls number D one GN sixteen dash zero zero three seven zero in, uh, in regards to Volkswagen Clean Diesel Litigation, the TCA Enforcement Cases pending in the three hundred and fifty-third Judicial District Court of Travis County, Texas. Fifteen D, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven one one A. Consultation with Attorney in a Closed Meeting When a Government Body seeks the advice of its attorney about pending litigation in calls number four two two CV zero zero four three six dot NH by and through the Nadine Dep and Nadine Dep versus Natalie Castilla, Matthew Merrick, and Denton County, which is currently pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas Sherman Division. And any appropriate action. It is ten AM, and we are in executive session.